Call.
Suizer Brandal.
Here.
Suizer Mendez.
Here.
Suizer Pacheco.
Here.
Suizer Quintero.
Here.
Chairman Magzig.
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and leading us in the invocation is our C A O. Paul Nerland has worked for the County of Fresno for between twenty and thirty years, was involved heavily in the H R department, and, you know, did a great job there where he led the organization for a few years, and then moved into the C A O's office, working as C O O for a couple of years, and then moved into the C A O position. He has a loving wife, many beautiful kids, and loves the Lord. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Paul. So please stand. We're going to do the invocation, and then we're going to do the pledge of allegiance immediately thereafter.
Thank you. Let's bow. Almighty God, as we gather today to consider matters that impact our community, we humbly seek your guidance and wisdom. We pray that you would grant our board and staff open hearts and minds to listen to diverse perspectives, and may our decisions reflect a deep commitment to our vision of working together for equality of life for all. We ask for your strength to navigate complex issues with integrity and compassion. May our discussions be fruitful, and our actions serve the greater good. In your name we pray. Amen. Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, under Suizer Mendez and Suizer Pacheco, approve and authorize Chairman to execute memorandum of understanding between the County of Fresno and the City of Fresno, and determine that the recommended action, number one, is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, Public Resources Code 2100, and direct staff to follow a notice of exemption with the Office of the Fresno County Clerk.
And I'm going to turn this over first to Supervisor Mendez and Pacheco to introduce staff and/or make any comments before staff makes their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, Supervisor Mendez and I have been working on this for many months now, occupied a lot of our time for this year. Before you today is the result of those efforts. Here today is our Deputy Director Bernard Jimenez, who was with us at every meeting, and has the institutional knowledge and the wherewithal to help us get this done. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jimenez to present today to the board and the public, please.
Thank you, Supervisors. Members of the Board, Bernard Jimenez, Department of Public Works and Planning. So approval of today's recommended action would allow execution of the memorandum of understanding, or M O U, between the County of Fresno and the City of Fresno. As your Board is aware, the M O U expired in 2020, and since January this year, the two Board of Supervisors subcommittees members have been negotiating with the City of Fresno, their counterparts, and that negotiation is represented here today. The M O U addresses three primary issues. The first it addresses is the exchange of property tax revenue between the city and the county as a result of annexations by the City of Fresno. It addresses a sales tax sharing revenue by the City of Fresno with the county. And then it also addresses coordination of land development and land uses within the city's sphere of influence. So as it relates to property tax revenue sharing, this M O U has two geographic areas where property tax revenue sharing is addressed. The first area is the city's Southeast Development Area, or S E D A. That area has a property tax sharing split of fifty-one forty-nine in favor of the city, and then areas outside of S E D A have a sixty-forty split in favor of the county. These property splits address lands that are not substantially developed, and in order for Fresno to take advantage of the fifty-one forty-nine split, it must achieve two things. First, within twelve months of execution of the agreement, it must annex, accept, or acquire right-of-way of two specified intersections within their sphere of influence. If that does not occur within that twelve-month timeframe, the property tax split would go to fifty-fifty. And then secondly, if Fresno fails to adopt a specific plan for its S E D A area within the life of the agreement, the annexations within that area would go to sixty-forty in favor of the county. As it relates to sales tax revenue sharing, there is a minor adjustment that's proposed to be made. Fresno has historically shared five-point-three-five percent with the county. This M O U would adjust that to five percent, which is in line with the other fourteen cities in Fresno County. The M O U also addresses cooperative efforts, and I'll highlight a few of the most significant ones. The first one is, within ninety days of execution of the M O U, the city has agreed to consider dismissal of the litigation it has against the county. The M O U also addresses the property tax transition agreement that exists between the City of Fresno and the Fresno County Fire Protection District. Basically, that agreement is set to expire August of next year, and if the agreement expires during the term of this M O U, then the city runs a risk of terminating the M O U agreement in its entirety. The M O U also begins to address the needs for the city to take on county-maintained roads in proximity to areas undergoing the annexation area. So there are standards that are included that allow that conversation to begin. The term of the M O U has an initial life of ten years, with the ability to automatic extension for five additional years unless one of the two parties wants to renegotiate. Last Friday, on December thirteenth, the City Council approved this agreement, and it's before you here today. One thing that's important to note is there's been a lot of comments received and comments made about the city's S E D A area. This agreement does not authorize any development to occur within S E D A. That's obviously within the city's sphere of influence. It does not allow annexations to occur. The city is still going through its land entitlement and environmental review process. The city has prepared a draft specific plan and a draft program, environmental impact report. It's circulated those. We have commented on them. We have identified deficiencies. We are on record. The city did a partial recirculation, and most recently, the city is, again, revising its environmental impact report to address items that were identified through its litigation on its general plan recently. So county staff will continue to be engaged in that process to ensure that our concerns are adequately addressed. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? I'm going to hold my questions until the public has an opportunity to speak. So seeing no...
I got one question.
Yeah, go ahead, buddy.
You know, Bernard, there's, this M O U has a provision, and I believe it's similar to Clovis, where it allows rural residential to stay rural residential. Is that correct?
That is correct. So with Clovis, we developed what's called a rural lifestyle agreement. And so essentially, what that allows, folks who are being annexed by the city, if there are rural residential parcels, two-acre parcels, that it allows them to essentially maintain that lifestyle until they are ready to go through a retitlement or an entitlement process. So Fresno has agreed to apply a similar type of, or offer that similar type of agreement with all areas that are, that meet that criteria.
Yeah, so if they don't want to hook up to the city water, they don't have to?
There, those details are being worked out, but they have committed to delaying any timelines for that implementation. So, you know, again, the agreement has not been developed yet, but we do have a commitment that, we gave them a copy of that agreement that Clovis has, and they're using that as a model. But I've not seen the final version, Supervisor.
Okay.
One quick question. Has the city signed the agreement yet?
I'm not aware that they have. I don't know if...
We haven't received a signed copy or anything.
We haven't received the signed copies. I understand after the Board takes action, we will receive the signed copies. I've been informed that they have signed it and taken their action. The clerk just hasn't processed it and sent it over. Is that correct?
My understanding is they were waiting on today, and then it was going to be routed to me directly.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions for...
Just to add, I've received assurance that those signed documents will be hand-delivered after approval.
I got one more question for Bernard. It's a theoretical question. You know, on development in any area, and there's still a lot that has to be done before they can even develop anything. I think there's only a couple of projects kind of in the hopper's, I'm talking globally in the city.
Yeah, we're aware of at least two annexations that are kind of in their queue that could be ready to go if this M O U is approved and executed by both parties. Outside of that, there's a lot of projects primarily on the western part of the city that are going through that development process. There is nothing in the Southeast Development Area in S E D A. Like I said, they still have yet to entitle that area.
So theoretically, in time, say, a couple months from now, they start the process. Of course, they have to have a willing developer. They have to have a willing seller to the developer.
Correct.
How many years out would they be before they could even do anything?
Are you talking about S E D A?
Yeah.
In that area?
Yeah.
You know, realistically, a lot's going to depend on how quickly they can come back with their planning documents and their environmental documents. There was a lot of concerns expressed about the adequacy of that document. So assuming they can get through the planning process, and there are no legal challenges, because if there are, then that obviously delays that process. Infrastructure has been a big question mark for the city, and the city has acknowledged this. They don't know what the cost is going to be to develop infrastructure and finance that infrastructure for that area. I've heard upwards of half a million to a billion dollars. So until that gets resolved, and some structure is put into place how they finance that, either through bonds or some financing district, then, you know, there's really nothing they can do. What's important to note is that individuals who live in the area currently, you know, depending on how annexation boundaries are drawn, if an annexation includes a minimum number of registered voters, then that process is really up to those residents who reside within that area.
Correct. So they can actually vote against it?
They can go vote against it, and we just saw that happen recently in the City of Fresno in the November election. There was an annexation that went to the voters that failed.
That was the Fanukey one?
That was the spin-off of the Fanukey annexation. So, yeah, so ideally, you know, developers go to the path of least resistance, you know, and they look for lands that are vacant or undeveloped, and those are generally the easiest ones to entitle. But it could be several years before actual development occurs within this area.
And probably build out of that area, I don't know if anybody in this room will be alive.
I don't suspect that that will happen during the life of this agreement.
Yeah.
Even with the five-year add-on.
There might be some younger people in the audience, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else have comments? All right, I'm going to open it up to the public. What I would ask is, I know that there's a number of members from the public that are here to speak. I would ask, as you come forward, keep your comments about this particular topic focused, and at this time, I'm going to open up the public portion. Please step forward, state your name for the record, and we'll look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Is this mic on?
We are David and Helen Ramming. We are, I'm a small farmer in the S E D A area, and there are a number of reasons why you should not adopt this M O U. And number one, it drastically does change the tax-sharing agreement between the city and the county, going from sixty-two thirty-eight to forty-nine fifty-one. And the other incorporated areas within the City of Fresno, like was just mentioned, is sixty-forty. This unfairly targets, though, the S E D A area for development over the other areas of the city's sphere of influence. Number two, the tax-sharing agreement is a direct attack against farmland and food production. The tax-sharing ratio for S E D A promotes single-family dwellings and not afford housing to meet state mandated needs. Do not adopt an agreement that promotes urban sprawl, converts farmland to unneeded single-family dwellings, and continues to devitalize the City of Fresno. This agreement greatly fosters annexation and development, which will cause a significant effect on the environment by changing land use, changing water use, increasing traffic while increasing noise and air pollution. An A R should be done to evaluate the effect of this M O U on the environment before adoption.
I am also speaking in opposition to the M O U. I request that you do not come to an agreement with the city at this point, so that the tax-sharing agreement can be used as leverage to hold the city accountable in all aspects, including the injustices that they are trying to slide through, such as not having concrete budget figures for their plans. We have appreciated working with the Board of Supervisors in the past. You have given us every impression that you want to save this prime ag land and maintain Fresno's rich agriculture heritage. Why, then, are you considering this fifty-one forty-nine percent ratio? Why were you initially going to vote on this without any notices to the residents? And why did you choose to do this five days before Christmas? What a tough Christmas present this has been to us. What is this to gain by your actions? It is one thing to lose our property because it's the will of the people, but it's another thing to lose our property because of political gain. The city's implementation of this plan has been unethical. It can only be assumed that the driving force behind the underhanded actions across the board is money. Is that our value system? Losing our farm is not as big a concern as losing the nine thousand acres of prime agriculture land with the best sandy soil in the country, and the water problems that will be coming with additional two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people. We, the people, made a strong statement at the last election, and we're opposing greed and unethical practices. We want to apply high standards to the local level. We are asking you not to adopt the M O U, but instead to use it as a leverage for the, against the city, holding it accountable in all aspects. So for a record, we are also going to submit our objections to the memorandum of understanding.
And to the public, I need to ask, so in this chamber, I treat everybody equally, so there will be no clapping, but I would encourage individuals to come forward, make their points, but again, please, no clapping. Thank you.
Mr. Magzig and fellow Board members, my name is Brett Thompson. I'm a resident of the S E D A affected area. So under your physical impact, the recommendation of the M O U modifies the existing M O U property and sales tax distribution provision. These modifications were negotiated between city and county and reflects both parties' commitment to ensuring adequate funding for critical services. There's no budget been provided for the S E D A project, so how can you agree to fund critical services without a budget? Another note is, city officials have determined five-hundred-thousand tons of carbon emissions annually would be expelled from the S E D A plan. This would cost taxpayers twenty-five-point-five million dollars annually. That's crazy. I relinquish my time to Sandy.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Sandberg, and I'm a Fresno County resident and a property owner in the S E D A Development Area. If I run out of time, most of these comments are in the emails that I sent to all these supervisors. A G V Wire article dated September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three contained the following information. City of Fresno right now receives a disproportionate amount of services from the county. Fresno city property owners generate sixty-four percent of the county's property and sales tax income, according to a twenty-twenty study from the county, but its tax contribution only makes up forty-two-point-three percent of its demand. A fifty-fifty split gives the City of Fresno a subsidy that the other fourteen cities in the county doesn't receive. The current tax-sharing agreement formula that the city has been using in the past is a hundred percent adequate, just based upon the amount of usage that the city of, or the county, the City of Fresno uses of county services. And then, in an article written by Paul Dictos, the current Fresno County Tax Assessor, he says, "As county assessor, my job is to complete and maintain the assessment role that shows the values and status of all property in Fresno County. Having served in this position for the past twelve years, I'm able to make certain observations and suggestions. However, in the last few years, the City of Fresno has refused to accept development proposals and permit the annexation of land in the false belief that the allocation of property taxes between Fresno County and the City of Fresno unfairly favors the county. Nothing could be further from the truth," he said, "when all taxes, property sales, and special use taxes are taken into consideration." Then, the fiscal impact report for the County of Fresno by Financial D T A dated November seventeenth, twenty-twenty showed the net county cost for provision of services by the County of Fresno to cities within the county. The City of Fresno services were characterized by the highest total N C C of one-hundred-and-twenty-seven million. It has been four years since that study. I am sure that the N C Cs are even higher now. At a special council meeting of the City of Fresno on December thirteenth, which was when they were discussing the M O U, Fresno City Manager Georgine White reported that the increase to the city from thirty-eight percent to fifty-one percent for S E D A was estimated to be an extra couple of million dollars per year for a hundred million dollars of property value. The estimated increase to the city from thirty-eight to forty for the non-S E D A was estimated about eleven thousand dollars per year, per hundred million. An extra couple million is far more than eleven thousand, and I do not believe the County of Fresno residents should be subsidizing the City of Fresno for the Southeast Development Area. And the rest of my comments are in the emails.
Thank you.
Chairman Magzig, members of the Board. My name is Joselio Baras. I'm the C A O of the Southeast Fresno Community Economic Development Association. We, our organization, opposes the creation of a new city in farmland, a farm area, because it will take valuable farmland at a time when the City of Fresno has vacant land, what is called infill. Why can projects be first developed, use up the space available within the city? The city has the infrastructure. When you go to a new area, you have to spend millions of dollars. The estimate I've heard is between two to three billion dollars to provide the roads, new schools, hospitals, all the other amenities that residents that want an urban setting have to have. Therefore, I think the timing of this M O U is terrible, and you folks should have had a clear rejection of the components that residents of the area do not want. I heard the presentation before the City Council, and they said that, oh, it's clearly that this project is not included in the M O U. As a former Director of Economic Development for Fresno County, I can tell you, the M O U is an excellent tool for economic development purposes, and, but the way you're commingling this issue with the other project, it creates, unfortunately, a force that works against a good project because it hasn't been sorted out. And we think that the creation of a new city in a place where we have high respiratory illnesses, the worst quality of air in the nation, we have it in Fresno, and to, and by the way, the environmental documents do a terrible job of addressing those issues, there will be a lot of legal challenges to that particular area. Therefore, I, as much as I like M O Us because they streamline annexations, I would, at this point, on behalf of our organization, would take a position against the adoption of this M O U as currently proposed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My name is Mike Matthew. I am a S E D A resident. I don't really have any real prepared stuff here. Buddy, I appreciate your comments, and I know what you're trying to do. You're trying to make it more palatable for us that live out in the area. And I know this is farther off, but what's going on with this M O U is it's one more nail in the coffin. That's what's going on. I've been chasing this pig since two thousand seven, and the only thing that the city has done, because they can't make this project float on its own merits, is to spend all of their efforts trying to figure out a strategy to make it palatable for the public, and it just isn't. Take a look at their E I R. Look at their plan. It just, it's a poorly drawn-up and flawed plan. And we have a choice here. The complexion of this board is going to change very, very shortly. And I'm afraid, and I'm not trying to blow smoke up your skirt, Steve, or Sal, but I'm afraid the complexion is changing for the worse. I'm going to miss you, too. But here we have an idea. You can either represent the people that elected you, or we can turn around and bend a knee to the city and let them do the things that the private interests and the developers want them to do, so that they can put more money into their reelection coffers. And I realize that that is painting with a really, really broad brush, but the paint's on the right wall.
Good afternoon, Chairman Magzig, members of the Board of Supervisors, Will Oliver with the Fresno County Economic Development Corporation. I'm not focusing my comments on S E D A, per se, but really around job-creating prospects throughout the City of Fresno, especially along the fringes of the city within their sphere of influence. Simply put, from an economic development perspective, without a tax-sharing agreement in place, we risk delays and deterrence to investment, creating confusion for new companies coming in, and sometimes halting projects altogether. When a prospective company comes into Fresno, they don't ask whether or not there's a tax-sharing agreement in place, but at times, depending on the site, if there isn't one, it creates an archaic and complicated process. By having this agreement in place, we reduce the risk and uncertainty. I think we make Fresno and Fresno County an attractive destination for business expansion, and I think this collaboration creates a level of stability that the businesses need to move forward. I'd like to extend our thanks to the committee members that were involved in this process to come about this proposed tax-sharing agreement. We realize that it was probably a challenging and iterative process, but we do appreciate those efforts, and we encourage support of the tax-sharing agreement as proposed. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors, Chairman Magzig, and county staff. My name is Darren Rose. I'm the President and C E O of the Fresno-Madera County Building Industry Association. On behalf of the B I A, I want to express our strong support for the proposed tax-sharing agreement under consideration by this body this afternoon. We believe that this initiative is a potential significantly benefit to the region, foster economic development, support residential, commercial, and industrial development in the county and city of Fresno, and furthermore, thank you to the Board of Supervisors and the Fresno City Council for moving this along after the four-year-plus delay. So thank you for that. We believe that this collaborative effort will equitably distribute revenues generated by new development projects, by ensuring both the city and the county and surrounding areas benefit from growth. This agreement promotes a balanced approach to regional development. On behalf of the eighty-plus members of the B I A and thousands of employees that work in the construction industry, we strongly encourage your support and vote yes on this important M O U. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board of Supervisors, Zach Gomes. I'm the Chairman of the Board with the B I A, and just wanted to show our support with this M O U as drafted. This will benefit financially both the county and the city, and the residents in both city and county. We would, we believe that this is a fair split, that it's going to create job growth within both, you know, within the county and city of Fresno, and we appreciate your time reviewing and hopefully approving the M O U as dated. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Keith Freitas. Al Solis said to send the love, and told me to get down here. I didn't know anything about this meeting. I haven't even seen S E D A yet, or S E D A, whatever you want to call it, but he told me to vote yes. So I want to confirm that. But he told me to vote yes, so I want to confirm that I think we're going to take the position, and I don't know if people understand, that under Sigma, they're going to take our farmland anyway. So, under Sigma, they're going to retire a bunch of farmland because of the water. So, whatever the Board of Supervisors sees that is maybe some configuration of offset to where we can actually get some gain from making that land productive, that would be great. Thank you for your forward thinking, gentlemen.
Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close the public portion and bring it back to the board for further discussion.
Yes, do that.
Bernard, you know, as I'm going over it, in all reality, I had the same document with a bunch of my notes, but I didn't bring that one in, and so I'm going off of a blank sheet, so I didn't have some of my prepared notes written in the sides here. So, I want to ask you about defining substantially developed. There's a phrase in the document that talks about substantially developed property inside of SADA and then elsewhere outside of SADA. And so, if people want to know what that means...
Sure. So, substantially developed is defined in the memorandum, in the MOU, as a piece of property prior to annexation has an improvement value to land value equal to or greater than one point two-five to one. So, if you have a piece of property and it has, let's say, a single-family residence, as long as that improvement value is one point two-five, one point two-five percent higher than the land value, then it meets the definition. And then, the property tax split in that case would be seventy, thirty in favor of the county.
Okay. And that is included inside of SADA? That mechanism...
That's included in their entire sphere of influence. There is no distinction between SADA or outside of SADA. The other two percentages that I described apply to non-substantially developed land. And in cases where a vacant piece of property is annexed and developed, the county retains a hundred percent of that property tax value. And it's, once it gets developed with, let's say, a subdivision or a commercial use, that tax increment then gets split by either sixty, forty, fifty-one, forty-nine, or some other value. But the county retains a hundred percent of the base value.
Okay. All right, I'm good for now.
Any other comments? I've got a few, but before we make motions, unless if others...
If you want to go, then I can go.
Brian, you go first. Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As we all know, our MOU with the city has been on hold for over four years. I would like to thank my colleagues Supervisor Mendez and Deputy Director Bernard Jimenez for all of their work and effort to helping getting us here today. And also, our colleagues across the street, Council President Annalisa Perea, Vice President Mike Krbasi, and Council Member Tyler Maxwell for their good faith efforts in negotiating to get this agreement here today. All three were very good to work with. And from the mayor's office, Ruthie Quinto was also in the room. This is a complex agreement, to say the least, and whenever you share revenue, everyone wants to maximize their share. However, I believe this agreement provides for the long-term stability that we have had in the past versus our one-off agreements. Lack of an agreement has set development to neighboring counties, as well as all of the jobs and revenue that go along with development. This agreement, in my opinion, provides for orderly growth and not urban sprawl. This agreement will allow the city of Fresno to bring in more affordable new housing to our county. In our last agreement, the percentage was sixty-two, thirty-eight, city. Decades ago, I am told, the split was fifty-fifty. This agreement, as Bernard has stated, has three different funding formulas for the tax split depending on where the growth occurs. For our county islands, which are substantially developed, as Mr. Jimenez defined, the split is seventy-county and thirty-city. And that incorporates all of the areas of the Fig Garden area and those regions, and it will. This will de-incentivize their annexation into the city. Our county residents on the islands have told us loud and clear that they do not want to be annexed in the city, and we have heard them. For a large portion of the city, the split is sixty-county, forty-city. These are not substantially developed parcels. And yes, we gave up two percent. And it was stated by one of the audience members, our financial analysis also estimates that each percentage point in this category is about eleven thousand dollars for every hundred million dollars. And the last split, forty-nine county, fifty-one city for SADA, this was very tough for us to give up so much to get to this formula, but in my opinion, these were the reasons. First, decades ago, a plan was made to steer growth into this area. As a supervisor from the west side of our county, I support this plan years after it was originated because I want to protect our unique and highly fertile farm soils of the west. If we allow asphalt to overlay our soil, we will never get it back. For proof, just look to the southern part of our state. LA County used to be the top-producing ag county in the state. Now, ag production is nearly nonexistent there. In addition, SADA will have a high infrastructure cost, as was stated. This formula will help offset some of those costs. Again, growth has been planned for this area for over twenty years. This tax sharing agreement reflects that planning, reduces urban sprawl, and reduces the potential of creating more county islands. Other points. This agreement identifies two intersections that are shared by the county and city that the city will take responsibility for. There are over ten intersections with shared responsibility. A council member on Friday during the city council's discussion on this agreement brought up why these two and not others. We would gladly let the city acquire all of the intersections at this time because they will eventually end up with them over time anyway, but there's a cost associated with these acquisitions that would not be fair to burden the city with all these extra costs at one time. However, if the councilman really wants to have them all, I'm sure we could modify the agreement and give him what he wants. Also, as Bernard stated, we are getting to a lower sales tax percentage than in the past. Fresno has paid more than our rural cities in past agreements. This was due to the auto dealerships on Blackstone Avenue when they were annexed into the city many years ago. The higher percentage was to compensate the county for lost revenue. We believe that this lost revenue has been paid, and it's time to make them equal to our other cities. Lastly, we will have an addendum in the near future to address mutually agreeable standards for annexation. This will save the city and our residents complications in the future. Supervisor Mendez and I have had conversations with Mayor Dyer regarding this, and we have assured him that we will work with him and the council to get this done. Mr. Chairman, one last thing. Over the course of the election, there's been a lot of rhetoric. It was stated on Friday that this agreement was reached as a result of this election, and that's simply not true. We started negotiating this MOU in the first part of the year, and we thought it would be worked out much sooner, but as you can see, the devil's in the details. Furthermore, I personally have had false accusations against me in the hopes to derail this agreement. I want to thank our city colleagues who were in the room and at the table for setting the record straight, and we have persevered. I would again like to thank my fellow county negotiator Supervisor Mendez, CEO Paul Neerlin, Deputy Public Works Director Bernard Jimenez, and county staff for their work in helping work through the details in this process and bringing it to conclusion. Also, I want to again thank our city counterparts, City Council President Annalisa Perea, council members Mike Krbasi and Tyler Maxwell, for staying focused and demonstrating that the city and county can reach an agreement on such a complicated and contentious issue. Mr. Chairman, it's also my understanding that the city has signed their portion and is simply waiting for our vote today to send it over. But again, in my discussions with our council colleagues, it is signed and ready to go. The county has several off-ramps. If in the event the city does not perform, as is stated, the fire protection is obviously one. If they don't reach an agreement with the fire, we have an out clause with that. I believe the county is well protected in this agreement, and I would ask for your support in this document. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sal.
I also agree with a lot of the comments that Supervisor Pacheco has made. I can tell you, having served on the city council years ago, the conversation of SADA first started up with the city of Fresno when I was there, and this was in the early two thousands, late nineties, that this conversation started. And there was some meetings with the county, but it was nothing concrete. And I also, you know, as the years went on, there was more and more conversation, and the big issue was the tax sharing agreements and everything. So, I really want to compliment Supervisors Mendez and Pacheco, and also Mr. Jimenez for the work that they've done. I mean, you've put in a lot of time. You're right, Brian. You've put in a lot of time and effort because I've seen the changes of what was initially discussed back in the day, and then there were some years that there was no conversations at all. And it was just a loss of revenue for both city and county by not reaching any agreement. And so, here we are today. So, I have to tell you that this is something that's, to me, it's historic because of how many years it's taken just to reach to today, and I think it's a fair proposal. And with that, I'll give it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. My colleagues to the left, any other additional comments before I make mine?
I'll make a few comments, but if you've got questions about the actual document, I'll let you go first, and then I just kind of have some wrap-up comments of perspective.
Sure. So, I will just, I want to thank Brian and Buddy. I appreciate the time that you spent. From my perspective, it seems like traction on your end, where the city really began to negotiate, took place in the last six weeks. This particular document, which is before us, I had not seen, none of us really had seen this document until Saturday of last week. There were components in this document that had been discussed, but just as one supervisor, about eighteen months ago, I shared concerns that I had generally about with the existing tax sharing agreement that expired with the city back in two thousand. The county of Fresno, by the numbers, was subsidizing the city of Fresno. This document, as I read it, as I look at it, reduces additional revenue with the new tax sharing agreement. So, we haven't really corrected some of the subsidies that are taking place, so I have concerns. One of the things we had discussed, and I was hopeful that it would be stronger in this document, but it's not, is I'm willing to adjust tax sharing ratios, but the city has to be willing to receive a lot more roads. So, in this particular document, where I have concerns, and again, I appreciate the work of board members here because none of us saw this final document until about a week ago, but with the two intersections, there's nothing in here that guarantees that the city's going to take them. They have to consider it and take them within twelve months, or the tax sharing agreement goes back to fifty-fifty. So, when I look at the language for things that are required of us, one thing which I find kind of ironic is the city of Fresno in here recognizes that the percentages are being reduced, but this document requires us to deliver the same level of service. So, where I'm kind of hard-pressed, recognizing that revenues that we get from the city are going to be diminished, the city is asking us to continue to deliver the same level of service, meaning theoretically, meaning that we're going to have to give more of a subsidy to the city of Fresno. So, those things, even recognizing that these developments are going to happen some point in the future, that causes pause for me. But it doesn't, with that being said, I appreciate the efforts that you and Brian and Buddy have put into this. But for those reasons, you know, I cannot be supportive of this document today. I wanted to see some stronger language in there, specifically as it related to roadways. Just on Monday, I made comments that I'm willing to make adjustments when it comes to the percentages of tax sharing, but the city has to receive more. But what I've seen in this document is that the city will consider, the city may, it needed to say the city shall do these things. One more concern that I have, too, is there is a lawsuit that the city has against the county of Fresno's general plan. And I know early on, we talked about through the MOU process that the city needed to drop that lawsuit. This document does discuss that, but it only says that the city shall consider it. And language has to be stronger. The language that's pointed at the county is very strong, and I feel like some of the language that's pointed back at the city is not as strong as I need it to be. But again, the efforts that the two of you put in are phenomenal, and I appreciate that very much. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had a chance to understand your concerns, and I think they're completely valid. And I would say that there are a couple of sentences in this document that I agree with you, that some of the language could have been a little bit stronger and a little bit tighter, and probably even our subcommittee understands that in the give and take of the negotiation, you have to make some compromises. I want to acknowledge a couple of things. Supervisor Pacheco mentioned that our county islands, in a way, are protected even a little bit more, and I'll tell you, I knocked on a lot of doors in the last several months, and there is ongoing concern about people in our county islands that don't want to become citizens of the city of Fresno. And so, I do want to acknowledge that, and I think that this helps give them some peace. But I understand there are other people that have the opposite problem and viewpoint in the areas that they live. For me, as I look at this thing globally, it's not just about SADA. This, to me, is not exclusively about SADA. There's a lot more going on, and there is a, every time you make a decision, you know, there's consequences. But there's also consequences, in my mind, of indecision. And for the last four years, we've been living in indecision. And without an understanding and an agreement between the city of Fresno and Fresno County, there's been a lot of postponement. And just like there are people here today who voice their viewpoint very well and their concerns very well, we've got an equal number of people in our community who want to do things with their property but have been hamstrung from being able to accomplish their life goals with their pieces of property. And I remember specifically the very first one, as I left the city council to come to the county, there was an annexation that was moving along. It was being promoted by a family, the Finuki family, and they had dotted their i's and crossed their t's, and they were in line to get annexed in the city Fresno, and they had some plans to do with their property, and it just got chopped out right from underneath them when the city jumped out of the tax sharing agreement, out of the MOU. And from that point, now, in the end, we ended up creating a one-off agreement for that annexation to take place, and I'm really glad, and I think it brought a lot of relief to that family. But you just can't go on and on doing one-off renegotiating every single time a family wants to bring, or the city wants to bring land into its sphere or its city limit. And so, I think, as I begin to approach what needs to be done, I think we arrived at the right spot. We have to have an agreement. The indecision has been, every bit is costly to the city of Fresno as giving up a few, to the county of Fresno, is giving up a few percentage points, in my opinion. We could have had four years of development on properties, and again, I'm not talking just about SADA. I'm talking about across the county, out in my area, North Fresno. We could have had properties that could have been developed that would have brought tax dollars to our community. So, that indecision has also been costly. And so, I think that we have got to get to the And so I think that we have got to get to the point, despite tough negotiations and language that could have been a little bit better, and I give you kudos for finding some of that, Chairman Magsick. I think we're at the point where we need to get something done, and it, it seems to me, notwithstanding the citizens that are here today, it seems to me that it's one of those agreements where the City of Fresno doesn't get everything they want, and the county of Fresno doesn't get everything they want. Is it perfect? I don't think so. But I think it's time to make a, a decision and put this annexation problem, this lack of development problem in our community, we need to put that to bed. And I, I want to do that today. Now, I will say this from another vantage point, working on the general plan as a city council member. SEDA has been a sticking point for many, many years. And I think some of the concerns that were raised here today from that podium, I think, are going to prove very challenging to the City of Fresno to get the things they want to get done in, in that, in that particular part of their city and that development. So I think there'll be many battlefields still to be won, but, or still to be challenged by some of the folks here today. But as a Fresno County supervisor, to me, I think it's time we put this to bed, and I'm prepared to support it today.
Any other comments?
No, I made them.
All right. Then we're at the point for motion, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, as the author of the document, I believe it's in the best interest of the county and our residents to approve this. I believe there are safeguards in there, even for the residents of SEDA. We have the rural lifestyle provisions. We do have roads. I will fully acknowledge we could have tightened that up even more. I believe that will be done in our addendum when we identify the standards for annexation in the upcoming months. And with that, I would make a motion to move this item forward.
Sir, a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I am opposed, and that passes for one.
We now move to item number two, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the Board on any matter not on this agenda.
Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on any item that is not listed on the agenda? Yes, please step forward, state your name for the record.
I don't understand a lot what's going on. My name's James Lamont, and I'm in the area that we're in, that's a quiet area, not like Highway 41. And I really don't want ours to turn that way. Are we going to be able to vote the people that own the land in this 9,000 acres? Do we vote on this? Is, is this a democracy?
So typically, I don't engage during public comment, but I'll share with you. So if, do you live in the SEDA area? So what we have just done does not annex that area, does none of that. The tax-sharing agreement only says when the city is prepared to begin to annex, not just there, but in anywhere which is within their sphere of influence, there is a tax-sharing ratio that they must abide by. It doesn't say that an area is being created, SEDA is being created, it doesn't do that. It indicates what the tax sharing is going to be once development occurs. As a private property owner, you do not have to sell your property. You can stay in your property as long as you like. Eminent domain will not be used to take your property to develop SEDA. So what we have just done only relates to tax sharing within spheres of influence that the City of Fresno has. That is all.
Okay. But are, are we, as a, as a whole area, do we vote on it or no? Do we have any say in it?
So it's a loaded question, because where there will be votes is if LAFCO, is if the city and a developer comes forward and there's a large annex, area to be annexed into the city, there is a property owner vote from time to time to be annexed into the area. So if you choose to not want to go into the area, you can cast a no vote, but that is way down the road because the city has to figure out how to bring sewer and water and provide roads and intersections and all of that before we even get to the point where portions of SEDA begin to be annexed.
And, and with 200,000 more people, which is a lot of people, we're going to have more problems, right? I mean, the, the air is bad, water is short.
And with that, sir.
Who decides that?
Yeah, with that, I will tell you that we, we've just been dealing with tax-sharing agreement, and ultimately, that area, SEDA, has been in the City of Fresno's sphere of influence for about 20 years, was created during the Alan Autry administration when he was mayor. So that's not what we were discussing here today at all. But everything you have said is right, and I would encourage you, if you turn around and look at all your neighbors right behind you, you all need to continue to speak with one voice. The City of Fresno still has an environmental impact document they need to complete. But with that, I'm going to stop engaging in my conversation with you, because like I said, I typically don't do that, but I wanted to just share a little bit with you because you've come here today, and I appreciate that.
Just wanted to find out what was going on there.
Sure, thank you. Yes, Sal, go ahead.
Wanted to ask Supervisor Pacheco and Supervisor Mendez if you felt that maybe it'd be a good idea if we could direct our city manager, our, our CAO to maybe put together a paper that's like question-and-answer type of thing that the, the residents can log into under the county of Fresno, answering any of those questions to clarify about whether they would have to vote on, on, on their properties around them and that type of thing. And I think that would simplify things that they could log into and maybe have the Public Works to, to handle that, to answer any, any questions that may be followed up that maybe weren't answered in that paper. I think it'd just clarify a lot of questions and with our process.
Happy to do that, and maybe even encourage the city to do the same, to have an opportunity to have a place for those questions to be answered, but happy to take that up with Public Works and Planning our staff.
And that's a perfect segue. I would ask for SEDA residents, you had a list of questions about 12 months ago, which I circulated back to the city, which I don't think got answered. Why don't you resend that to my office? And since the CAO is committed to also ask the city to answer questions, please resend that to me, and I think it's a great way to, you know, get some of the questions that you have answered. And where the county can answer, we will answer. Where the city needs to answer, we will ask them to also provide a response. Happy to do that through my office. Good point, Sal. Any, anyone else from the public wishing to comment on items that are not on the agenda? Please step forward at this time. So, so again. Yeah, so again, SEQA was not a part of anything that we dealt with today. The, the, in this, in this tax-sharing agreement, you have, what's interesting is you have the whereas's. What we dealt with today is now therefore be it resolved. So if you flip to about page four, that's kind of, that's kind of where we began. So the whereas's are basically what's already established, what must be done, but we, the points of this MOU are the now therefore be it resolved portions. But anyone else wishing to comment on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing that, I'm going to close the public portion. And typically, we have board member comments. I, I know that officially now, this is, my two colleagues, this is our last meeting with you, and I appreciate both of you very much, and I just want to wish everyone who's watching and everyone that's here a very Merry Christmas. With Christmas next week, it's important to keep our mind on those things which are most important. I greatly appreciate the Savior of the world who was born, and I greatly appreciate family, and that's what our community is founded upon. So any other comments that members would like to make?
Do you want to go make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you can. We've got a motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Steve, today is the first day of the rest of our lives.
Supervisor Brandal?
Here.
Supervisor Mendez?
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco?
Here.
Supervisor Quintero?
Here.
Chairman Magsick?
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and leading us in the invocation is our CAO. Paul Nerland has worked for the county of Fresno for between 20 and 30 years, was involved heavily in the HR department.